Anyway. Welcome to our last part of the session. And we're going to start with the slide. On the beginning, to the right, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite in justice for all.
You can keep that. There. How do you want? Yeah, we're getting one back somewhere. So, Chris, would you like to make a roll call?
I just shut my mouth.
Wait, say something. It may be fine. What do you still?
Yours.
Is it me? No, it's not me.
Oh.
Is it me? Is it me? Is it me? I don't know. I think you are.
I think like several have made fun, it looks like.
Division one? Here. Division two?
I'm here.
Division three, here. Division four?
Here.
Division five?
Here.
It says three. How do I? Chris. How's that? No. Her audio is still on.
Did you go to the speaker?
Yeah, it's already joined. Okay. It's not going to work just muting her. You have to unjoin her audio. I might need to send you.
Send me out to go into the.
Yeah, go ahead and leave and I'll log you back in.
Okay. We'll get the show on the road. Sorry. Thank you for helping.
Well, we're thrilled that everyone is here today participating. We have the demand model. Thank you for coming in. And as a workshop model, we ask that we have give and take with the audience and with the public, maybe online. Raise your hand, be able to speak, and Jennifer is going to monitor anyone who has questions online. If you have questions in the audience here physically, please go to them and then I'll call on you or our speaker will call on you. And we just ask you to be mindful, state your name, be mindful of the audience and moving through for our two hours together. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer or to Doug. I'm not sure.
I think we will just get started. We're talking about the demand model today. Katie's going to walk you through the presentation. Folks at home, you can ask questions via the chat or by raising your hand and you can speak your questions. And then folks at home, as President Holt said, please use the podium, just so the folks at home can hear you. We did have a stakeholder group meeting regarding this. We got some really good comments, especially from Aaron, who I don't hear. But Aaron did get some good comments. We're going to address for him, just some clarification on the original demand matrix. As everyone recall, when we started this process, we had sent out a matrix for all of the resources that would dovetail into calculating the demand. And I think one of the points of confusion was essentially how do we use that data? And so a lot of those questions will be answered during Katie's presentation, but then we will also clarify, make some clarifications on that demand matrix so people understand. It's not like a one-size-fits-all kind of thing. So, and I know there has been a lot of concern that, you know, we're just kind of continuing to do simple tiering off from the demand that was presented in urban water, in ag water management plan, and that's not essentially what's going on. So stay tuned. Katie will walk you through and dive in and ask any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Having some little.
Yeah. Ready when you are, Chris.
I'm starting.
Done. All right. Thank you all for having me here today. Oh, it's the microphone. Is that okay? All right. Yes, thank you all for having me here today. My name is Katie Cluas of Davis Engineering. I'm also joined here today by Marco Bell of West Consultants and also Jeff Davis, also with Davis Engineering, and they're here in the audience, too. So the presentation today is going to, as we alluded to, provide an update on the demand model development thus far since our previous presentation back in January. As you all are aware, the consultant team that's working on this Plan for Water Process are collectively developing a series of interconnected models from the upper watersheds to NID's reservoirs to NID's customer base, looking at potential factors that could impact the supply of water that NID has available, but also the demands on that water potentially in the future over a 50-year time horizon. So today's presentation is primarily just focusing on that demand piece, so the customer base there. My presentation today will start out with a brief recap of some of the content that we presented back in January, providing an overview of what it is mean by demand in this model and also our approach to estimating demand. And we'll also provide a review of some of the key inputs that go into that model. And we did provide a much more comprehensive review and summary of those inputs back in January, but there are a few that we just wanted to provide some more clarification for and give you some more information of those impact demand and also to the extent that those impact our discussion of the sensitivity analyses. So that'll be, I think maybe the meat of this presentation is talking about the sensitivities of, you know, NID's demand. So what are the factors that we expect could potentially impact demand the most over the next 50 years and what are the potential magnitudes of those impacts of a variety of different potential scenarios? And then finally, we'll take what we see from those sensitivity analyses to think about next steps and what we might incorporate into those future demand scenarios, basically in this, you know, Plan for Water Process. So with that then, I'll start out with the overview of demand. So what is demand? Demand could mean many different things, you know, in many different contexts. In this particular case, when we talk about demand, we're talking about the volume of water that's needed to meet and satisfy water users' needs, and that could be, you know, agricultural uses and urban uses, but it could also include recreational uses, environmental uses. So for, you know, the sake of illustration here, I only talked briefly about ag needs and urban demands, for the sake of talking about some of the factors that impact those. However, those are not exclusively the only demands within NID by any means. Agricultural demands, as we know, can be impacted by the types of crops that are grown, the types of irrigation methods that are used, how much water is being used to satisfy crops' water needs, but also what are the climate effects on crops, what are the soils, you know, where is water going and how is it used in urban environments? How much, what is the population of the area and how much does each person use? You know, those are two of the big factors that impact urban demand. But so too do, you know, climate and soils and other factors that also impact agricultural demand. So there, you know, all that is to illustrate there are many different things that go into demand, many factors that we consider. More specifically, within this Plan for Water Process, when we talk about demand, we're really talking about the sum of the raw water deliveries that NID is making, treated water deliveries to treated water customers, the system losses that are incurred downstream of the reservoirs to get water to those customers, and then also municipal supplies, you know, raw water that's delivered for municipal uses and also environmental flows. So those are going to be the five components of demand consistent with the previous Plan for Water work that was done. So our approach to demand modeling, I've mentioned it at the top, this Plan for Water Process is really focused on that 50-year time horizon, what can happen down the road to impact supply and demand. And our approach to estimating what those demands are really involves two main models or two components to our modeling approach. We have what is considered our IDC model, which I'll go into on the next slide and redefine that for you all. But that's really a way of physically simulating how much water is needed by raw water customers and treated water customers. So what's happening in ag lands and urban lands to drive demand in a calibrated physical model, which I'll go into on the next slide. We also have a water balance for the lower conveyance system below the reservoirs that provides us a means of estimating what flows are needed to get water down to those customers. And that also provides us a connection point back to the reservoirs and that overall Plan for Water Model Process. So that's the point of connection between, you know, customers' needs and the reservoirs and the supply upstream of that. And then to that, we also have an understanding of what projected municipal needs are and environmental flows under the FERC requirements, and those can be added in then to provide our total sum of what we estimate to be the demand within NID. So today's discussion is mostly going to focus on that, you know, the model for the customer parcels and also to a certain extent the water balance for the conveyance system. We won't talk so much about the environmental flows, but those are, you know, being added in at the reservoirs.
Let's take a quick break. I see some faces that might have some questions. Great.
So you're breaking it down to agriculture, urban, and then you have municipal, but then you add in the municipal, environmental flows. Can you give me a percentage, how much, if 100% was municipal and environmental, how much would be municipal and how much would be environmental? I guess my point is that depending on who you listen to, ag uses a certain percentage of water, urban, municipal, and environmental demands are increasing. How does, how do you factor in the environmental demands and how big is that sector?
So the environmental demand, are you talking about like at a crop level, at a parcel level, or are you talking about our FERC requirement?
Like a regulatory mark.
For this modeling, environmental flows are regulatory flows. And other types of data analysis that you see where it identifies water use by sector within California, environmental flows can also be, flows are just not captured through diversion. So we have to be very careful in comparing what we are doing on a more granular basis for our districts with some of these larger tables we're seeing coming up from state.
That's the point, yeah.
Yeah. So these are, the regulatory flows, anything required by water rights, FERC licenses, environmental permits, those would be considered environmental flows. We call them environmental flows because we have to track them. It's just a common word we have assigned to it for our accounting purposes.
And those are relatively straightforward depending on your type, right?
Yeah.
If you have specific flow requirements to meet, and so that's relatively easy to put into the, into the model as part of the overall demand.
IDC, is that International Data Corporation or something different?
It's something different. Something different. And I'll define that on the next slide. I apologize. Yeah, there's.
It's all right. I'm softer today.
All right. So IDC in this case is actually the Integrated Water Flow Model Management Calculator. So that is a long, you know, long list words that comes down to IDC. And so that's what we mean by the IDC model in this case. And that is a model that has been developed and is supported by the California Department of Water Resources, and it is a means of physically simulating what's happening on the landscape, you know, where is water coming from and where is it going in the soils and the crops and the urban uses. And it's, you know, a robust, a robust physical means of simulating those flows. And so it's a tool that I know that many different consultants and, you know, people involved in planning and people involved in also research environments have used for a variety of different applications across California. It's one of the very widely accepted approaches for long-term water planning. I know that it's used in agricultural water management planning and groundwater sustainability planning that's been done across California, so very widely used in all of those different settings. So in many of those settings also have 50-year time horizons similar to this. So that's IDC in this case.
Love this slide.
What's that?
I love this slide.
Oh. It's all defined. All the acronyms are cleared.
I know. I hate to introduce the acronyms before defining it, but my apologies. It's a long, it's a long, long phrase. So this slide then is really just meant to show that, you know, there are many different inflows and outflows to the landscape that are being accounted in the IDC model in this calculation process. And, you know, based on what we understand about the precipitation and, you know, any water that's flowing off of the landscape or evapotranspiration up to the atmosphere, we can back into an understanding of how much water, how much surface water needed to be applied to that landscape to meet all those different needs, given what we know about the climate and what we know about the water needs of those crops or, you know, urban uses. So this is our means really of estimating those supplies needed to meet those demands. So that's our brief recap of the content that we presented back in January. I'm happy to answer any more questions about the overall approach, but otherwise I'll get into a little bit more detail on some of the inputs that go into that model. Right? So with that then, so again, this Plan for Water Process is looking at a 50-year time horizon, but, you know, we don't necessarily know what's happening tomorrow or next year or 10 years from now. So what we're starting from is a current model that's calibrated to recent historical data and then using that as a launch pad for estimating, you know, what potential conditions could be impacting demand in NID.
Well, maybe it's the slide again.
Go ahead.
But you do talk about land use. My question was, did you integrate the general plans for these areas from Nevada County and Placer County? You did?
Yes, we did. We did look at that. And yes, I'll go into that on the next slide.
And then I wanted to know what miscellaneous truck was in the yellow. I never, I didn't understand that in the next slide.
Okay, I'll define that.
Did you know that? No, I didn't. Okay.
And we have one more question from the public. So this is from Laura Peters, and I'm not exactly sure on what model, but we'll take a guess at it. So she says, how did the person that developed the model define agricultural water? I'm assuming we're talking about the demand model that we're doing. So is agricultural water, raw water?
So that's, I mean, if we're talking about, so the way that the model is set, this IDC model, we have an estimate of how much water is needed to like, you know, deliver to a field or a parcel that is, you know, if it is identified as an agricultural field, if it's pasture or, you know, orchard, the water that's being supplied to that field is agricultural water and that would be a raw water delivery. If it's a field that NID serves.
How would you categorize just lawn?
A lawn? You know, it depends on kind of how that gets characterized in the land use data set, but if it's, if it's characterized as pasture, you know, based on the information we have, then that would be potentially a raw water, you know.
Right. So we're not going through some great extent on a parcel-by-parcel basis to, right, and it would be impossible to do so, to separate out raw water use for pasture versus lawn?
No, yes, we're looking broadly across all of NID at, you know, the best information that we have, but, you know, there are, you know, potentially some limitations to that data. You know, we don't have the ability to walk to every house and, you know, verify what's on the ground or in the ground. But we do have, you know, good information that provides us complete coverage of the landscape, which I can get into on the next slide, or I can get into now, I suppose. I'll just briefly say for this slide, the key inputs that we'll talk about are land use, which we've already launched into, also climate-related inputs. So those are going to be the factors that really pertain to the unique varied climate characteristics that are seen across NID from, you know, north to south and east to west. There's quite a variety of different climate conditions within NID. So that's also what we'll introduce. But to get to land use, so the land use information that we have provides us a complete coverage, a complete picture, so to speak, of what the landscape is covered by within NID. So we have data from the Department of Water Resources that provides us field or parcel level information about, you know, crops that are grown or urban areas that are developed within NID. And then we also have information from the U.S. Department of Agriculture that provides us a coverage of all the rest of what's going on in NID. So that could be, what we have here is quote-unquote, you know, native vegetation, this tan area, that's going to be, you know, undeveloped forest area or undeveloped vegetation. So that's what we mean by native vegetation. That's just a classification that is used in those data sources. So that's why we have that here. But we also have a coverage of, you know, pasture across NID and different permanent crops. So those might be orchard crops or, I guess in this case we have vineyards separate, but that's another permanent crop. Miscellaneous truck crops are going to be really a catchall for any other, you know, tomatoes or whatever other crops are being grown within, within the district. And we also have certain areas that are idle or urban and also, of course, water and repairing vegetation. So all of those different, you know, every area within the district gets classified to some extent, you know, to, with differing levels of spatial detail. The Department of Water Resources data that we have is field or parcel level data. The Department of Agriculture Crop State data that we have comes from satellite imagery, so that's available at about a 90 feet by 90 feet, you know, square area. So we have, all of this data gets combined into one comprehensive coverage of what's going on on the landscape in NID.
What's the difference between permanent crops and truck crops?
So permanent crops and truck crops, truck crops are going to be more like annual crops or crops that might change from year to year.
A crack at riches. Does it? Yeah.
Tree crops.
Hardwood.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, is that too much, ma'am? Yeah. Which does well.
Well, they all, they all get trucked offsite, right? I mean, the question is more like she was saying, it could be tomatoes this year, it could be squash next year, it could be, you know, it's that type of, this is a tree type of deal.
Some permanent crops get truck farmed also. You just kind of put them in the truck, going off and selling them.
Right.
Chris has a question and I have one.
Go ahead, because you already talked.
I'm looking at native vegetation and I know most of that's being grazed as active farm. I know some of it's even irrigated, but it's not showing up.
Now, why do we know that some of it's irrigated?
It drives.
It's pretty small.
It drives around a lot.
Why don't you explain, because we had a long conversation about this during the stakeholder group. Why don't you explain about the native vegetation?
I mean, I could see, I can see two near us, but I do know there's others. I do see the vineyard on Indian Springs. It's a 90-foot.
Yeah, I was going to ask what all that black.
Let's let Katie talk about, since we had a good conversation.
Yeah, so maybe I'll start out with the black, just to say that that's, that's an artifact of a lot of small densely packed parcels. Those are the lines, the boundaries of the parcels. So just seeing from, you know, the zoomed-out scale, unfortunately it shows up as black on the screen and, you know, if we had a large blown-up picture of it, we could look at each of those little parcels.
So those could fit in these categories.
Yes, exactly. It's just that the map is small.
Kind of what I just thought.
And I, and I'll say too, so this map here is our land use coverage in 2022, but it is simplified to the extent that this map is showing the predominant land use for each and every parcel. However, as I said before, we do have some more spatial detail, you know, as much as 90 feet by 90 feet areas. And so we do have an understanding of, you know, within a parcel that is, on this map shown as native vegetation for the sake of illustration, we do have an understanding of, you know, if, you know, 40% of that parcel is actually pasture, we do have that information. And so this information, this is one part of what goes into our, our demand model of many, many parts. But another piece that gets overlaid with this are the, you know, NID customer details because NID does not deliver water to every single parcel within the boundaries of NID. So we do know, you know, from, from delivery records, which parcels are NID customers and could receive water in 2022, or, you know, maybe we can estimate, maybe they'll also receive water in 2027. So we can take that information, overlay it so that, you know, we can, we can estimate the water that's delivered to NID's customers for, you know, ag lands versus urban lands.
So to follow up.
Sure.
On the pasture thing, so a lot of that may not be irrigated pasture, but it's been reseeded and converted over to, you know, feed, but it doesn't show up here. It just shows up as native vegetation.
Was it, did you get, was not irrigated?
It's not irrigated, but it's seeded and then brings up with natural precipitation.
Well, we're talking about water demand, so we wouldn't care about that.
Understood.
I will say.
But in the future, I mean, it could be irrigated.
Oh.
Has potential.
What I can say is that in this model, we are generating, you know, an estimate of, you know, the evapotranspiration, you know, we can, I'll define it in a little bit, unless you're not aware of what evapotranspiration means. But, you know, the water that is used by certain crops across every parcel or, you know, I say crops, I mean vegetation. And maybe it's not a crop. Maybe it is, you know, just, you know, an area that's treeed and undeveloped. So we have an estimate of how much water perhaps those trees use, but if it's not an NID customer, that doesn't factor into our calculation of the demand that NID has. So it's, you know, it's something that we're quantifying just for the sake of having a complete coverage of everything within NID, but it's not part of NID's demand.
So we got a question from Peter Burns. He's requesting whether you post an interactive version of this map that would allow Zooming to see greater resolution per parcel. We'll have to talk about that. I'm not sure if we can actually share all the data, but we'll get, report back, Peter.
And I can say too, I mean, the DWR data and the Crop State data are both publicly available. There are interactive maps online where you can zoom into, say, your parcel or a parcel you're familiar with and see what that was classified as in 2022 or 2021 or whatever year you're interested in. So this is all publicly available, not just generated by us.
So Chris has a question?
Thank you, Katie. My question revolves around the previous question on the chat. It has to do with this, looking at the land use and the demand use. For the purposes of this study, for the demand study, we're not going to be defining how much goes on pasture, how much goes on trees, all that. So we're kind of, we're kind of conflating or overlapping that discussion, which I think is sort of, well, it's interesting and it's not part of this discussion. If we're talking about the demand for raw water, period, beneficial uses in California, it doesn't matter if it goes on a lawn, orchard, or whatever. So I think we need to, we kind of need to bring that back to the discussion. That's my question or my comments about this, because we get into land use, that brings up all those questions about, you know, how many acre feet of water goes to the media or whatever that. I don't think it's perfect, this conversation.
Well.
And we certainly could do that. Fascinating, interesting. I don't know how much.
It's probably pertinent to future conversations related to conservation. Also, remember, in, the Water Code already identifies prioritization for water use if things get really bad. But I'll also caution everyone, wait, you know, when we get to the last part of the presentation, we're going to, Katie will walk you through how the sensitivity analysis somewhat hedges against these parcel-by-parcel concerns of grass versus rangelands versus, you know, somebody's changing their trees out. So once we get there, I think some of this will start coming together, where we keep talking about, we're going to have the bookends, and the bookends and the scenarios really hedge against either purposely understating demand or purposely overstating demand. So I think some of your questions will be answered, but I think you're, you're getting on target.
Thank you.
Got my question? No. Thank you. Oh, so in your, you know, on this same slide, on slide 11, we have pasture from the crops, trucks on. Do you have the percentages of what goes on?
I could provide that, what the areas are, from our analysis in 2022.
I don't know that it's, you know, that it has a lot to do with water use, but it seems like it could. And I'm just interested to know of this land use giant puzzle you've got here, how much is pasture, how much is urban, how much is idle, you know, those kinds. It would be interesting to know.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I, we could certainly provide that information. And I also, as I mentioned before, too, that the, you know, maps of these are also available publicly, too, if, you know, I don't know, you're interested in seeing more detail in particular areas.
And then just to follow, so if you have the percentage of land use, then does it also translate to the percentage of water use? So that X acre feet is used on, you know, pasture and permanent crops? I, you know, I just wondered if there's a correlation between the land use and the water use that you guys have looked at.
You could do that with the load ounces is run.
What this does.
Right.
Yeah, there are different innate water needs of different land use.
Right, I know. So that's why I was kind of interested.
And that, that does factor into, into our demand modeling. We're actually going to that a little bit here.
It's pretty interesting. I'm actually pretty impressed. So the yellow block, ranches in there.
Oh, wow.
So just the bottom half of it. But if you look across the street, like, it's very accurate.
Oh, is it?
For our area, it's very accurate.
Good. We zoomed in on the right area.
It's a little bit of the wrong area.
It would have been wrong if we were wrong.
The vineyard property is more impressive.
Yeah, this data, yeah, it's remarkable, the accuracy. I mean, a lot of the, historically, the land use data. I mean, a lot of the, um, historically, the, the land use data, um, has been, you know, field troop. I, I, I use this, um, this term in the last meeting, ground troops. By that, I mean, you know, people went out and, you know, looked at it and verified, yes, this is pasture or yes, this is non-irrigated undeveloped land. Um, and so, um, there's, you know, that's definitely something that's factored into a lot of these land use analyses over the years. So, um, yes, quite, quite, um, good accuracy.
Otis, you have any questions?
Uh, yeah. You did this, you did this from satellite data.
It's very.
Uh, how does that square with the survey that NID put out? It just, which is a big total and self, self-filled out by the, uh, kind of a subset of that is, how many acres of pasture did you find by satellite? Within that number of acres, one of the ongoing questions that people have been asking since the beginning of the process was, how much is actually cultural and how much is actually urban landscape uses? And I'm hearing that you can't distinguish between turf and actually irrigated pasture. Are those all woven together? Those are like four or five questions.
Well, I think maybe one thing I'll, I'll kind of start out with is that this is, um, so this is, you know, the 2022 land use here. Um, you know, ultimately, this Plan for Water process is looking at a projection of what future conditions. So that's really kind of the, the goal of this work. Um, more so, you know, we want to have the most accurate starting point, of course. You know, we don't want to start from a bad, inaccurate position. Um, so, you know, I'll just say that, that, you know, that, you know, looking back at historical, um, land use and data and, you know, how that corresponds, like the crop reports versus what we understand from the satellite data, um, isn't necessarily the focus of this work. However, um, you know, we did use the crop report information to verify, um, trends in certain areas and zones in NID. So to make sure that, you know, that's the data that we had from, you know, our spatial, you know, land use here with the DWI USDA sources, um, was generally, you know, within the realm of what we were expecting from crop reports. Um, although we did understand that, again, that crop reports were somewhat anecdotal or, you know, NID weren't always verified. So we took them with a, a measure of salt, I suppose, you know.
Tell the question, how, how do they square?
Yeah.
Did it square up?
You need to speak up, Otis.
Is the microphone on?
Well, the microphone, ask the tortoise, there you go.
Yeah, the, the question is, how does, how does the accurate open AT information square with the, um, surveys that have had in the past? And the specific question drilling down on that is, how many acres of pasture did you find with the open AT?
Um, so it doesn't, the acres of pasture that we have is, isn't from open AT, although I will, you know, talk about open AT and how that data was used. But, um, this information, um, that we have from, from DWR and USDA, um, it, it depends on the year. We have several different years of data, but, um, it's generally with between, you know, over the recent historical past, anywhere around fifteen thousand acres across NID. Not all of those are NID's customers, um, maybe up to, you know, twenty thousand acres. Um, so it, it, it depends on the year, um, how that squares versus the, uh, crop reports. Um, I don't have those numbers, I submitted to memory, I apologize, but I could, I could provide you that and, and provide.
We could take a look at it.
Yeah, we certainly have that.
A simpler, a simpler question is, you know, if, if the open AT is identifying pasture, you're able to do it on a ninety foot by ninety foot pixel? Certainly not going to convert to acres.
Thank you.
All right, so I think that there's a little bit, we keep getting bogged down on grass versus pasture land. And for this particular purpose, we're not splitting hairs on that. Because from a water, a water delivery purpose, NID does currently not have any different delivery patterns, regulations, or requirements, whether it's grass versus pasture. Now, will that be addressed in the future and will that, as we continue to become more sophisticated collecting data, will that become part of the suite of data we collect? Probably, likely. Uh, but for this particular exercise, that's not included, right? We're up at a more macro level, looking at water supply globally that we need, not how, you know, splitting hairs between lawn and pasture.
Right.
Jennifer, traditionally, just to wag, um, what percentage of raw water users return the survey?
That's a chip question, but it's.
Is it like less than fifty percent or fifty percent?
How many do you think return the survey?
Oh, the crop report?
Yeah.
Oh. Actually a very high number, because we don't allow new service until we get crop reports.
Yeah, so new service. What we've talked about doing, yeah, what we've talked about doing is in the future requiring people to resubmit and verify every year. But you also have to understand, this is completely self-reported.
Right.
A lot of people do not care for small local government being in their business. A lot of businesses traditionally do not like small local government being in their business. And we do not currently have a process or the manpower to go out and verify. So we, you know, I want to put a whole lot of stock into.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to illustrate. I personally, as a user, have never returned one. And, I mean, I'm not saying that, that proudly, but it usually comes like at a time that isn't good for me.
Right. And that's one of the areas, you know, as I keep harping on, one of the things that, um, has come out of our strategic planning, and I'm sure Katie would be super happy with us in twenty years that we collected piles and piles and piles of accurate data. And we'll move to that, we're just not quite set up for that yet.
I should be better.
We have special rules for board members that, or I mean punishment, yeah. Donuts for all of staff if Trevor doesn't.
That's okay.
Trevor doesn't bring his crop report back, donuts for everyone.
Only the field guy.
[laughing].
And the office.
That means all of us.
No manager, no manager.
What, what?
Okay.
The manager's for you, Trevor.
So I have just an observation, and that is, um, as we look at this land use and connected with water use, there are instances where farms are served through wealth.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think that that's, I don't think it's a huge number, but I think that does happen and I know some farms where that's the case. Um, I have a question, which is, what percentage of the land within our boundaries, our service boundaries, is actually served by NID current?
Um, I believe you, and you could correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I, you know, it's the total area within NID's boundaries are three hundred thousand acres, give or take. Um, I understand that, you know, deliveries are made to perhaps thirty, thirty-five thousand acres of those. So it's, you know, maybe a tenth or fifteenth or somewhere around there.
And we can, well, some of these are good questions, I know the data is just interesting. So we'll slice and dice it a little bit and come back with some of these facts, because I think that it does provide a little perspective too.
Yeah. Um, and so I guess the last thing I'll say about this slide, I mean, that, you know, this is 2022 land use, to the best of our understanding. And there's, you know, definitely the Plan for Water process is looking towards the future. Um, so this information then is being combined with what we have about NID's current customers, but also what we know about zoning, you know, where areas that aren't currently developed maybe could be developed. That comes from, you know, general plan information from the counties. Um, we also have information from NID about kind of soft service areas, quote unquote, which are, you know, areas that are not currently served, but maybe could be. Um, they're, you know, within close proximity to, to infrastructure, um, maybe, you know, their neighbors serve, but they're not currently served. So in any case, um, that information gets combined together into, um, our sensitivity analyses, which we'll go to, into in a bit. Um, and also then will be factored into those projected future scenarios. So looking at where areas could reasonably, you know, be developed further than where maybe they, they aren't. Um, so in addition then to, so land use is one piece of it. Um, climate is another big factor that goes into the land equation. Um, and so I'll talk about climate, um, for example, with respect to precipitation. Um, as you all know, there's a big difference, um, from north to south and east to west across NID. Um, and the climate characteristics that are, you know, experienced and also, um, precipitation here. For instance, we have precipitation plotted from, um, kind of the northeastern corner down to the southwestern corner of the district. And we see, you know, range of different precipitation, um, across this area. This data comes from, um, the PRISM climate data set, which comes out of Oregon State. It's basically a means of estimating, um, you know, how much rainfall occurs, um, across, you know, the entire United States from various different, um, points where, um, precipitation data is collected and then use different, um, models to kind of estimate what's happening between those points. So this comes from that data set, um, the last thirty years or ninety-one through twenty-twenty. So these are climate, uh, or precipitation normals. And so what we see is that precipitation kind of falls into what we saw for about three zones. Um, zone one, which are going to be the higher elevation areas there in more the northeastern side of the district. Um, the area of precipitation, maybe on average is somewhere around maybe fifty inches per year or so, maybe a bit more. Um, all the way down to zone three, down there in the lower lying areas where precipitation is twenty-five to seventy or more inches per year. And then zone two falls in between those. And so for this purpose of developing our demand model, um, we looked at other, um, you know, precipitation and, um, other climate characteristics and developed basically three zones that, um, we used in our demand model. So parcels within, um, zone one, zone two, and zone three, um, received kind of a representative, um, you know, precipitation and other climate characteristics that were found within that zone. So that's set up so that when we're looking at the future model, you know, we don't necessarily know where exactly rainfall's going to occur twenty years from now, um, but we can know kind of generally in zone one, it'll be higher than it is down in zone three. Um, so, so that is how the, the structure of the model is set up currently for, um, these climate characteristics.
Just tell us, I, I have figured out what frequency means over here.
Right, meaning.
Oh, my apologies.
That's too quick.
Yeah, so that's basically the, um, the PRISM data set that is, um, you know, is used to generate this map. Um, so the, the grid cells are maybe four kilometer by four kilometer, I think in this case. If not, they're eight hundred meters by eight hundred meters. But basically, the frequency is just the number of those four kilometer by four kilometer cells that kind of fall within that bin. So these are just histograms. Um, basically, you know, within, um, zone one, for instance, all those blue bars, um, you know, there are, the majority of those different boxes within zone one fall within that, you know, fifty to fifty, fifty-three, you know, inches per year bin. So it's a, um, that's what is meant by frequency in this case.
You have a question, Diana?
Yeah, um, I see this access, this average precipitation, what is the vertical?
We just, we were just talking about frequency.
Oh, my.
What is it?
Yes, so that's, um, that's basically just the number of points on that map there that fall within that, um, amount of precipitation.
How popular is it?
Exactly, yeah, exactly. How many of them are those? Yeah, that's a great word.
Well, Diana, if you also look behind you, it's just getting cut off.
Of the total, it's not a percent of the total.
Well, it's not a percent.
Yeah, it's a frequent, that's why it's a frequency, how many of them are there, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
And then, before I move on, Mr. Burns did want me to reference the California Constitution, Article Ten, Water Section Two, for everybody. So.
I wrote that down. Interested to find out. Wait, you straightened it?
I think it's reasonable doctrine.
Is it reasonable?
Yeah, but it has to do with our water rights. So we can talk, that doesn't really come up in this conversation, but we can talk about it.
Thank you, Pete.
All right.
Um, so now that we've talked about, you know, land use and climate, um, you know, talking about climate through the lens of precipitation, but, you know, there are other factors in that climate. Um, you know, when you combine kind of what's on the land surface and what's happening in the atmosphere above that land surface, you can gain an understanding of what's happening to the vegetation on that landscape. Because it's impacted both by what the crop is or what the vegetation is, but also by the surrounding, you know, temperature and, um, wind and other factors. So, um, evapotranspiration, just to define it clearly here, is really the process by which water is lost from vegetation to the atmosphere and that's through evaporation from, you know, the surfaces of plants in the soil and also from transpiration through the plant tissues. So transpiration is just, you know, water is taken up through the plant's roots, for instance, and then it's lost out to the atmosphere. And this is really a necessary, uh, process when the vegetation is growing to, um, to let carbon in. Water naturally comes out. So it's just an inescapable loss of, uh, water, um, to the atmosphere. And one key, uh, feature of this that we all know is that there is a temperature change whenever, um, you have, um, evapotranspiration. And that's something we know from, you know, sweating. So if we sweat, we have a cooling effect, um, when that evaporates from our skin. Um, we know, you know, if you walk out on a hot day to a, uh, a well-irrigated grassy field versus the parking lot, the field will be a lot cooler, all else the same, um, than the parking lot is. So there's this temperature difference, um, that we experience with evapotranspiration. And that'll be key in a couple of slides, because that's some information that we can use to estimate how much evapotranspiration is occurring. Um, so this next slide, there it shows. Um, so there are, um, a variety of factors that impact evapotranspiration. Among those, uh, first of all, climate, which we just talked about, but, you know, it's going to be your rainfall, your wind speeds, the solar radiation that's coming in, um, many different factors will impact evapotranspiration. And there's also the innate water requirement of a crop or vegetation. So pasture will be very different, perhaps than an orchard, um, which will be very different than a wetland. Um, so different water needs in different environments. And so whenever, oh, also I should say, um, beyond just a crop itself too, there are, you know, between two pasture, you know, fields, you might have very different characteristics within those. You know, one might be very healthy and well-irrigated, whereas one might be sick and spotty. And, you know, it's, it's very different, um, characteristics, very different water uses. And so one of the common ways, um, that we can estimate, and one of the standard approaches for estimating evapotranspiration for that water that's needed by that vegetation, is to take a climate factor. Um, so in, um, there on the right side of the screen, you see there's, um, you know, an ETO factor, that's the climate-related factor. So that's the factor that is capturing what's happening in the climate. And then there's also these KC or KS, you know, those are the crop factors. So that's what's, um, specific to the vegetation or, you know, what's happening on the landscape. And so by multiplying those two factors together, you can get an estimate of the water or, you know, the evapotranspiration or the water requirement of that crop in that environment. Um, and so that's one of the standard approaches for estimating how much water is needed by crops and vegetation. And, uh, so I say that, um, because that is, you know, actually, I'm going to go back one.
Diana, Katie Rich has a quick question slash comment.
Quick comment. This past four days, five days, been a prime example of evapotranspiration with the south wind, high humidity, low temps. Now we're going into north wind, higher temps, low humidity, and we doubled our irrigation time.
Hmm.
Just in prep.
Mm-hmm.
You did that.
Irrigated all the way through, but it, it, it's amazing how much raw water we'll be using in the next weeks.
Mm-hmm. That's interesting. All right. We good? All right.
Okay. And I, one more thing I'll say on this slide before going to the next, is that, um, you know, we have our, our climate-related factor and our crop-related factor. Um, the climate-related factor, we can gain information about that from, you know, what we have on the weather data and other information about climate. Um, the crop-related factor, um, can be a little bit more, uh, limiting. You know, maybe we have information, um, about pasture, but that crop factor, maybe that was developed at a research station down in Central Valley, or maybe it was developed at a research station in the Midwest, um, somewhere maybe that's not quite like NID's conditions. Um, and so, you know, maybe that's the best information that ten or twenty years ago we had about how much water pasture needed. Um, but now, today, we do have some more local information about kind of the unique, you know, characteristics and what's happening on the ground in NID.
The research station is right down the road.
Oh, well, there, there you go. If, if, if it was developed there, that would be a good, a good.
That would be.
A lot of them were developed in Idaho though, um, and other, other states, so there's, um.
But the UC, uh, UC Davis research is right off, I'd be twenty.
There you go. Well, I will say then, so that's, um, you know, one means of quantifying evapotranspiration. Um, in the last, um, several years, um, decade or so, or maybe even a little longer, um, there have also been means of estimating evapotranspiration from that temperature effect we were talking about a second ago. So using satellite imagery, um, to basically take a, you know, a picture of the earth, um, and kind of get information about what temperatures are going on, on the surface of the earth, and then use that to estimate the evapotranspiration of what's covering the earth there. And so then we can have, you know, our land use information and its temperature information to gain an understanding of evapotranspiration for different types of land uses within NID. And so that provides us some more localized perspective on kind of what's actually happening on the ground here, um, based on the best available data that we have for, you know, the wide and diverse landscape and very diverse conditions that you all experience. Um, and some benefits, Sarah, that it is, you know, has a very wide spatial coverage and relatively low cost for the amount of information you get. Um, and I'll just, you know, show here, so this is, um, a figure showing the evapotranspiration for all land uses, you know, not distinguishing any particular land uses, just, you know, the total, um, evapotranspiration for, um, ninety feet by ninety feet pixels all across the entirety of NID, um, in 2021. And, you know, I think really that the message here is that there's, there's quite a variety of conditions all across NID, um, depending on, you know, for one, how much water is available in any given part of NID, but also, you know, climate-related. available in any given part of NID, but also, you know, climate-related, um, characteristics within different parts of NID. So, um, just, you know, really showing that, you know, it is, I think, important and a benefit to have, to use whatever, um, information that we have that's very specific to the unique local characteristics here in NID. And then even, you know, just focusing in on one particular zone, so zone three, that's the lower elevation zone, I'm looking at all fields that were classified as pasture. In this case, this particular year, there were three hundred and forty-seven parcels. NID didn't necessarily deliver to all those, but these are just all the parcels that had predominantly pasture within them. And we see that, you know, even just within zone threes, there's quite a wide variety of conditions we see, anywhere from, you know, twenty to forty or more, um, inches per year of water through evapotranspiration, um, you know. So really just showing that, um, you know, whatever information that we have that can provide more in detail about kind of what's specifically happening on the ground in NID, I think that's probably better for, for this model.
And we had, during the stakeholder group, we had a really good observation and a discussion surrounding it. Katie, I don't know if you recall, but why, for example, zone three has, shows lower, um, inches of ET kind of in the western area versus up in the mountains. So we're, it's kind of helps explain what's going on, so I'll let Katie explain it.
Oh, sure. Um, yeah, there was that observation, I mean, certainly, you know, in zone one, perhaps, um, temperatures are generally a little lower, but there's just quite a lot of water there. I mean, you see, and there's, um, spots within this map where there's a lake or a river, those are very blue, because it's just an open water surface, lots of opportunity for, um, evaporation, so.
More water, higher evaporation.
Right. Thank you.
And before we move on, Michael Ross did share a li, uh, link in the chat, I think this is probably in response to Peter, uh, for the California Department of Water Resources' Land Use Survey Interactive GIS Map. Thank you, Michael.
My question was, uh, does the, the graph on the left accumulate with all three zones?
No, so this is just, for example, zone three, the one that's blue dark. Yeah, and it's just for pasture. That map does show, you know, everything that's happening, that's just for, for fields that are pasture, um, in that year.
Is there's a lot of water going up?
Oh, yes. Yeah, it's a big part of demand.
Yep, it'll come back down.
An ID territory or someplace else, that's the thing, right?
All right. And then I think this is the final, um, slide here with respect to ET, but just showing, um, you know, again, the, I think the importance of using what local information we have here. So this slide, um, we have a dark black band, that is the, um, the median of, you know, pasture in zone three, so just kind of jumping back to the last slide, this is that, that median, that dashed black line down the kind of the center there of that graph on the left, um, and then the gray band around that are the, you know, the tenth to the ninetieth percentile of parcels that are pasture in zone three. So just kind of showing, you know, the range of conditions with respect to ET that we see in that zone for that crop. And, um, you know, this is to highlight really that any, you know, other sources of information that we have, um, that are, you know, reputable and, um, you know, available for, for estimating ET in this area, whether it's from, um, Cal Simatah or from the Irrigation Training and Research Center at Cal Poly Family Sabisco, or, um, even, um, more locally, the Yuba Water Agency, their groundwater model we have, you know, estimates ET from, from their work as well. Um, you know, it's really across the board showing higher levels of evapotranspiration than we're seeing, um, perhaps from, you know, this local information here. So, you know, we don't want to, um, either overestimate or underestimate how much water is being used in NID, um, in this, you know, process. Um, and I think that using the open ET information, um, and leveraging that to estimate some local conditions within NID is going to provide us the best foundation for, you know, capturing what's happening here, as opposed to using, you know, other sources that maybe were developed for different environments.
What does Simtah mean?
Um, so that is a model, um, basically, uh, Simtah, I think is just a combination of simulation, yeah, and the ETa, the ETAW is, um, evapotranspiration of applied water. It's basically, it was developed on a state, and it was, um, it's a, it's a, the name of the model.
So it's one model showing lines for the different counties. You want to talk about a little bit of the difference with the Irrigation Training and Research Center data that's shown, and why it has that weird dip?
Yeah, um, well, that information, um, came from, you know, the information that we had from them about water budget development, and, um, I don't, I don't know that I can necessarily explain why they have that dip there, only that we don't see that in, you know, the local information here, so would not be inclined to, to use that if that's not what we're actually seeing here.
Can you talk a little bit more about, obviously, the curves are all quite, I mean, they vary quite a lot. So how, how will we identify or integrate the different data sets, or do we pick one? And what's the rationale for picking one?
Well, um, I think I can kind of get into that on this next slide here. So I think what our recommendation is for, um, for moving forward with the projected evapotranspiration, that, you know, the projected model, which is kind of where we're going with this, um, is that we recommend using the open ET, um, data to develop those crop-specific factors. Um, you know, the great thing about, you know, the open ET data and like recent historical units that we have, you know, for each month or, you know, days of the month, we have estimates of ET in 2021 and 2022, but we don't have satellite data for tomorrow, or next year, or ten years from now. So we need to have some other way to estimate, um, ET. So we propose to use, um, the open ET data, since that's, you know, the most, you know, local information that we have, um, and our professional judgment is probably the best information that we have for the unique conditions here. Use those to generate the crop or vegetation-specific factors, and then use the information that we have from the other parts of the plant and water process about climate, so precipitation and, um, temperature, and use that to generate the climate-related factor, and then, you know, use the, the standard approach of kind of multiplying those two factors to get our estimate of ET. So that's what we're proposing, um, for the, uh, projected model. Now, you know, what information from that open ET data we use, whether it's the, you know, the median of what we're seeing, or the tenth percentile, or the ninetieth percentile, you know, kind of where in that range, that's what we'll get into in the sensitivity analyses. But, um, I think that, you know, that, that dataset, the open ET data is, um, is what we would recommend for, you know, the basis of that at least.
Do you have an idea of why the, on the previous slide, those four rainbow-colored simulations are so much higher, hit, hit the higher peak?
I, uh, only, only that I can imagine that the.
Like fifty percent?
Yeah, quite, quite a bit higher. Um, only that I can imagine that, you know, the, the, the crop-related factors, for one, um, probably came from a source that maybe came from like Central Valley or something, um, you know, maybe it's where higher ETs are.
The open ET bill is more, uh, refined for this, this location.
I think it's more representative of what's happening here, yeah, for, for this location.
So I, I'm just confused by that, because we have the Seminole, Nevada County, Placer County, Yuba County, and those are the rainbow-colored lines.
I, I think what she's trying to convey is that the simulation is for those counties, the, the run of the simulation, but the model is using more of a generic, um, uh, training set.
Right, using information that's quite so refined for NID or for this county.
The other model, training information, the data that's being used to train the model, is from here.
And it may be way more accurate if you were in the Central Valley, you may see exactly that, right, that those, those other ones fall better in line with what you would do in there.
And it's a great resource for, uh, yeah, for, for looking kind of state at large, perhaps, and for areas of the state where maybe they're, you know, maybe they want to have an understanding of like ET and, well, before open ET was available, perhaps, you know, have, you know, an estimate of ET for a particular crop in some area where they don't have a model to, to kind of estimate what ET is. Then Cal Simatah could have been, you know, could be a great resource to, to at least get a ballpark estimate, but, but like you said, it's quite a bit higher than what we've seen with the open ET data at least. That then, um, that carries us through, um, the overview of some of the more, some more development that's gone into some of the inputs for the demand model. So now this will carry us into the sensitivity analyses, um, for current demand scenarios looking toward, you know, the projected, um, scenarios of what could happen with respect to demand in NID. So the purpose of these sensitivity analyses is looking at, um, different, um, factors that can impact demand, um, in NID, so we can set bookend scenarios for those future, you know, fifty-year horizon, um, conditions. Because we, you know, we don't know what's going to happen ten, twenty years from now, but, you know, perhaps we can, you know, what we'll need to do is set some reasonable bookends we feel will fall between, um, you know, will probably be somewhere in between those two bookends in the future, and then refine those as needed, um, as more information is learned, you know, five, ten years from now. Um, and so what we're evaluating for potentially, you know, identifying some bookend scenarios are potentially changes in NID's customer base. So if, um, there are more or fewer raw water customers or treated water customers, um, how could that impact demand? If there are changes in crop cultivation practices and environmental stresses on crops, if there are climate change effects, how is that going to impact demand? And then also if there are, um, changes or differences in system losses, then what we expect currently, um, how does that impact demand? So those are the factors that we, um, we evaluated, and as those were seen to be perhaps most impactful, um, potentially in the future. And so the five different sensitivity analyses are all done with respect to a common baseline level of demand. This baseline level of demand is set based off of a, um, starting with a calibrated historical model that was calibrated within about two percent of recent historical demands in NID. And then, um, within that model then, looking, um, using, you know, average recent historical precipitation, um, recent average evapotranspiration, um, for different land uses in NID, um, setting the land use areas, you know, what's happening on the land surface in NID to the 2022 level or value, and then also setting populations and urban per capita water use to 2022 values. Um, and then also, um, assuming a baseline of fifteen percent system losses, and that comes from, um, our understanding of kind of the current best knowledge of, uh, the losses from the raw water system. So that is the baseline demand scenario, and that is the common baseline for each one of these sensitivity analyses. Um, and I will say, you know, each of these, uh, figures on the coming slides are all going to be structured like this, um, little graph here on the right, where on the vertical axis, we have the average water requirement, and that just includes, um, the raw water, you know, deliveries to raw water customers, deliveries to treated water customers, and the system losses below the reservoirs, you know, within, um, canals, um, and so forth, that are incurred to get the water to those customers. So that's all that's included in that vertical axis there. And then on the horizontal axis, we have, um, which, which run it is. So we'll go through and define for each of these analyses which, you know, what the different runs are relative to that baseline level. And so these.
So the baseline, in ten years, during that ten years, we've had five years of quite dry years, uh, some historical. You, how do you average that in? Because are we, are we looking for that in the future, or, I mean, they weren't normal five years.
I don't know that we know what normal is anymore.
Yeah, well, I agree with that, but I, I just wanted to.
Well, I think you'd have to start somewhere, right?
Yeah. Would it, I mean, would it be better to take twenty years?
We considered that, um, I guess the one limitation here is that, um, by using the open ET data directly for these sensitivity analyses, we did have that starting just in 2016. That's a data product that, um, is not available before that. Um, so, you know, we wanted to kind of keep as close to that, you know, ten years seems like a good average, you know, we didn't necessarily want to start in 2016 or 2015, you know, I think ten years is a, you know, a pretty, a pretty typical period to consider, you know, for average climate conditions, um.
And I agree, we, we don't know normally.
We don't know, yeah.
Can you talk about, uh, system loss, that number?
Yes, that was based off of the, um, the last raw water mashup thing we did. The majority of the canals were assumed to be fifteen percent. There was a few that was a little higher, some that was a little lower, but the majority of them were fifteen percent. Um, I believe some of those could have come from, uh, some of the minimum, um, measurement in and out, right? Because a system loss, we can't necessarily tell you whether it's evaporation, it's seepage, et cetera, right? We just can know, and as we start to develop more of our, of our understanding of what goes in and what goes out, we'd be able to better refine that information. So it was just more of a, of a historical understanding, and let's chip, unless there's something else that you can think of that was just kind of more of what, kind of what operators and folks are kind of used to, is that, that's kind of a, and it makes sense for most of those facilities. But there were a couple that were higher and a couple that were lower specifically, but the majority were considered a fifteen percent loss.
Or investment that we're making in.
Absolutely.
Gauging stations, telemetry will help to.
Uh, absolutely, we'll be able to be more refined in terms of specific canals and what that actually is. Again, not being able to differentiate between seepage and, and evaporation, but knowing that the total, we're going to have a better understanding that, yeah, the Campa West Canal is really running at twelve percent, and the other canals running at ten percent or whatever.
And that could help us make strategic infrastructure improvements in the future to reduce losses on specific canals, which is most bang for our buck.
Right.
So when you did this analysis, you know what you put into it? Did the subscribers take out of it? And you look at the tails? Is that how it's, or is that more?
Chip, you want to come describe it?
We're coming to that. The one variable that, uh, you, you hit is the input, it's the output, and how much has been purchased in the middle. We don't know how much.
It's actually taken, that's why I was asking.
That's how we get the fifteen percent, it's what we put in, it's what's at the end. We assume everybody purchased a hundred percent, fifteen percent is the.
So the loss is probably much greater than that.
Has that potential, but again, without, um, more finite measurement.
Yeah.
And, and we don't have that capability right now, and I would not recommend not moving forward with this process to wait for that data, right? That would be a bad decision. All right, hold on, Otis, one second. Uh, Mr. Ross says, how is conveyance water factored into the model? Are you referencing carriage water, Michael? I think so. I, I think that comes out of the reservoir operations model. Is that correct, Marco? I think he's talking. Michael, can you type in the chat, are you talking about carriage water? Okay, we'll wait for him to respond. Otis, while we're waiting for Michael.
Yeah, just wanted to add in here that, that, uh, we, I remember twenty-five years ago, I was in PCE, or we kind of, well, it's kind of sort of fifteen percent losses, that sort of. When we finally got telemetry on both at the beginning of the canal and the end of the canal, clearly showed that it was worth the investment to actually put in baffles at the beginning of the canal that were in real time with what was tailwater and so you were actually real-time managing. What happened, actually stunned the staff, I talked about on your ratio, he was a manager there, he said they actually saved fifteen thousand acre feet. The draw went from a hundred thousand down to eighty-five thousand. Five years later, I checked in with Andy Feckman and said, Andy, is that still what you're seeing? Absolutely, it's the best investment we ever made. So they have losses, they have seepage, they have everything else, but just taking care of the carriage water and the tailwater, they saved fifteen percent. These are the losses that you are currently experiencing are probably much greater than that. Another anecdotal story is, I was talking to John Selfman, he said they measured the , um, the land ups and the, that was approaching, and water, the, 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 the.
And then there's that.
So, um, catching water in that little bit details really is critical.
All right. So, uh, Mr. Ross, I'm assuming, Michael, you're also the anonymous attendee, so I'm going to use this definition for your question. So, um, his question was, how is conveyance water factored into the model? So when we had, went through the process of the urban water management plan, Ag Water Management Plan, there's kind of this carriage water that gets included into the calculation. So he wants to understand how, per the California Water Plan water portfolio, this represents the total amount of water used to convey water from the source to the use. the total amount of water used to convey water from the source to the use. For example, if 200 acre feet is diverted into a canal, 108 acre feet arrives at its place of use, and 20 acre feet is the amount of the conveyed water. This includes water that is both recoverable outflows such as seepage and deep percolation and irrecoverable depletion such as evapotranspiration, evaporation, or deep percolation to a salt sink.
Apology, I was going to throw my share here. This is Marco Vialla, the West of Austin, team project manager for this project. Thank you, Katie, you're a great doctor, appreciate you. But, yes, that is coming out of the post-processing of RESIM and the IDC model. So, after the RESIM model, look at the IDC model and figure out how much water they go there. And then, based on that, we can do like a water balance to check what those numbers are. So, it is at the rear of the, what, primary, you have the RESIM model?
Right, that's what I thought. All right, Michael, so this is not that kind of conveyance water or otherwise known as carriage water, is not included specifically in Katie's demand model, but it is addressed through the RESIM model.
Just for clarification, carriage water is what-
It's a conveyance, it's basically, yeah, how much extra water do you deliver? So, if you deliver one feet, but in 0.2 acre feet? I'll turn it back over to Katie.
So, then, starting from that common baseline scenario, we have our five sensitivity analyses. So, what happens with changes to the raw water customer base, changes to treated water customers, what happens if ET changes just with respect to temperature, or if ET changes with regard to a variety of factors, you know, climate, but also perhaps, you know, irrigation and other, you know, cultivation practices, you know, looking kind of at those percentiles of ET that we saw from Open ET. And then finally, also, system losses. So, you know, we have this estimate of 15%, but what if, what if that's not quite right? What's the difference in the demand if it's higher or lower? So, those are our five sensitivity analyses. So, now I'll walk through each of those. And for each of these sensitivity analyses, we have basically five levels that we looked at. In many cases, number three is our baseline level, but in a few cases, number two is our baseline level. So, I think I'll just point you to the, kind of the dotted black line there. That crosses through what we consider our baseline level and the baseline's also indicated there in the table on the left. So, thinking about raw water customers first, so if all else stays the same and only that the number of raw water customers are served is changing, what happens to demand? So, from our, you know, lowest demand scenario, so these are numbered 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 1 being basically the lowest demand scenario and 5 being what we consider the highest demand scenario. On the low end, you know, if there is a huge idling of the non-permanent crops, those are going to be those truck crops and, you know, pasture for the sake of this analysis, we considered a non-permanent crop. So, what if those are, you know, half of those are all idled? There's quite a big drop in demand there, you see from about, you know, our baseline demand of about 130,000 or so acre feet per year. That drops down to not quite 80,000 acre feet per year, so quite a significant drop, about 50,000 acre feet or so. Now, what if only a quarter of the non-permanent crops are idled, you know, sometime in the future? What is the change in the very then? Well, that, you know, then increases a bit from that lowest level, but it's still quite a drop down to 105, 110 or so thousand acre feet. On the flip side, what if the raw water customer base grows? What if there is, you know, growth out and expansion of delivery service to more parcels? And I will say, you know, this is not a reflection of actual capacity, you know, available in the system. This is just purely an exercise, kind of looking at parcels that are known for ag that are not currently served by NID but are within 1,000 feet of a NID canal, so kind of, you know, pretty close to the system. What if half of those parcels are served in the future?
They're currently-
Currently, they're within NID's service area, but they're not currently customers.
These aren't looking 50 years ahead, people that we're going to bring into the, every year we pull in these additional annexations.
Not looking at annexations like outside of the boundary for that, just within the current boundary.
These are all our soft service areas that we're talking about, right? Reasonable distance from the canal.
But it doesn't exclude the donut holes.
Would it assume that they're in-
It would assume that, because you don't know that where the donut holes are. Okay.
It assumes they're all annexed. All the donut holes are-
Yeah, it's in the boundary.
Yeah, for the public, the donut holes are the in district boundary parcels that are not part of the district. They refer to donut holes because they're little spots in the boundary.
Officially, they're called islands.
They're called islands. I prefer donut holes.
You talking-
Oh, that would be the hole of the donut. The donut hole is an actual donut. I need to change my analogy, metaphor.
What volume of water is assumed per parcel?
So, this is, this is basically assuming that the expansion occurs with an average historical crop mix. So, it's, you know, for any given parcel, if it's pasture, or if it's an orchard, or if it's something else, it'll have a different level of demand associated with that crop. So, this is just, you know, assuming that there is kind of an average historical crop mix expanding into those areas. So, it's going to, it's going to vary by parcel.
So, it depends on what's next to it.
But this is assuming an increase, that breaks down more part, I, I just want more detail.
Yeah, I think what, what we're talking about is overall system, we have this much of this crop type, this much of that, this much of this, so there's a kind of a percentages. And so, they take that same basic percentage, and let me know if I'm wrong, and extend that into these other areas.
You're just applying, applying an average water use, water demand.
One tomato and one that, then we're going to expand that same ratio into these non-
District-wide, that's the question that's not being answered. Are you taking a district-wide crop average and applying it to these infill parcels that are within 1,000 feet? Or is it more spatially identified by this particular area is mandarins and this canal, it's within 1,000 feet and this is mandarins and only rangeless?
It's, the average is taken from district-wide.
Okay.
So, I don't have that, I think what you're looking for is kind of an on-average, how much water is going to any given parcel, like a depth spaces. And I don't have that here, but I could provide that.
That would be helpful. And is it based on, when we talk about, we're talking about crops being grown, that's an assumption. I mean, why do we, I mean, is that based on our crop reports or is it based on your, your data that shows the crop density and pasture density, vineyard density that's coming out of other sources?
So, the, the distribution of crops, like, you know, what's happening within each parcel is coming from our land use data. However, you know, the information that we have about who is currently a customer and who is not, and, you know, which parcels are being served, that's coming out of NID's data, but also, you know, data that we have about like zoning information from the counties, you know, which, which could be ag parcels or currently are zoned for ag. So, that's, it's a combination of these different data sources we've been talking about. And that gets taken together into this IDC model, this demand model, and so these are the results on aggregate across the entire district.
So, goes back to Karen's question, I just want to make sure it's answered, is I believe you were asking, how do you, how do you know they're going to grow crops? But this particular situation, it's assumed that they're growing crops, that's why the average crop data is applied because these are only infill parcels within 1,000 feet of a canal. If we were to assume that there was, you know, the other option would be there is no connection, there is no infill. So, it's just for the scenarios.
Could, you could connect and, and have a worship pasture or have, you know, a play lawn or-
All still water for, that's why she's applying the average.
And, and this is also just a hypothetical scenario for the sake of kind of, we're seeing like the range of demand that we could possibly have and then we-
If it was all on south flatter, it would be askew, anything. Water and the crops and everything would be totally different.
It could, and for purposes of long-term modeling, that is for planning purposes, you know, we're never going to answer these questions to some, a level of certainty that can be applied to a parcel-by-parcel basis. We have to make some larger assumptions. I think that the key here is, you know, those 1,000 feet within the NID canals, is that reasonable? You know, if, if you wanted to over-elevate demand, you would say within 5,000 feet, right? That grabs a lot more parcels. So, you know, once we start looking at the data, we can start saying, okay, you know, is this super unreasonable or not? But that's also, remember, we take all of this sensitivity analysis, we take all the climate change modeling, all of our information, and then we come up with those bookend scenarios.
This can be, I would like to continue if you don't mind. This, though, increase, we have 50% crop idle, 25% crop idle, but then we have 50% increase in service and 100% increase in service. All of those being assumptions and variables that affect demand for water. And I, I mean, I would like to know our historical data on how many parcels have been added over the last, I don't care what period of time, within 1,000 feet of the NID canal. Because just because you can doesn't mean you will. And having a bookend that shows demand up here that hasn't played out historically, I just want to know, I don't know that maybe it has, maybe we have had a lot of growth within 1,000 feet, you know, over, I, I just like to have that data set because-
I'd like to know that too.
I also think you got to keep in mind, it's just as unrealistic as 50% of non-permanent crops, right? So, we're, we're looking at extremes to get a sense of the potential worst and best-case scenario. What, what the real question is, is when all of this gets modeled, what happens with the baseline under climate change conditions? Because we can play these extreme games all day long. We can say, what happens if we, half of our raw water air parcels are no longer served as-
It's reasonable to ask the question, though.
I think it's reasonable, but I want to get caught up on it.
If we're really focused on 1,000 feet from, from the canals, we should be able to easily come up with the last 10 years, how many new parcels have been added to 1,000 feet from the canals. It shouldn't be that difficult.
I don't know that it's difficult, I don't know how relevant it is when we're looking at a 50-year period, but we'll, we'll go back and provide some data.
But, you know, I think, you know, part of this with the sensitivity analysis, part of showing that these big, and the raw water customers, these big changes are dramatic swing in terms of our demands, right? When you, we get to the next ones, when she's looking at the treated water.
I'm way less interested in the 50% than I am the question she asked. That's something that we can go, okay, the last 10 years, this is what the trend was. Maybe it trends way up because of climate change or whatever, that's-
That's right.
Predictive modeling. But we could at least go, this is what has been going on, like every year we add 20 customers. If that's the case, then we go, okay, for the next 10 years, that's 200 customers.
I think, I think there's a couple of things we need to look at also. Quite a few years of those, we were not in a surplus, so we could not add new customers. The next thing is, we're looking at two different scenarios that water wells are drying up and we're going to get some numbers, I think. And also, there's a possibility of an eight-month irrigation season. So, how's that factored in? Because we're not, now we're at six months and when we, if we have to go to eight months to serve our customers, because already they're, they're calling for October, November into whenever starts raining. So, those are quite, those are strong increases for demand for our water, raw water. And then if the wells continue to dry, get drier, and people who are farming with the well no longer can, they're going to want raw water. So, I think, exercise going up 50%, 100%, but it could be a real one and we'll know going down the road. But I think the numbers of how many people we've added, I think five years, we could not add anybody.
I don't think it was that many, but, well, our experts will know.
You also have moratoriums on some-
Right.
Two, right, which-
That's right.
This doesn't take into account the fact that, you know, the Lincoln Canal is maxed out or whatever canal. But, yeah, so there's also that component, whereas people have been wanting water and on a lid, can't get it because the system doesn't allow that particular.
You could also just have a moratorium on new connections period, right? If this comes out and says-
In drought years.
Even in non-drought years. You can say, okay, we're only letting new connections till we have, you know, this money, our demand reaches X, because anything past that requires us to build new storage. So, so, I mean, I understand the, what I'm trying to prevent is the getting too in the weeds about Run 3 and 5. From the standpoint, I think the real answers come looking at what happens in the baseline under future conditions. Yeah. All right, so we've heard some requests from some additional data. I'm going to go to Michael Ross really quick. He says, and I think the answer is yes, but I'm going to let Katie verify. Do you have an average NID raw water customer per acre purchased water and average ET-based per acre demand?
Information-
We could, yeah, we could develop that for you. So, we'll provide that next time. Otis?
A couple of other questions. Run 3, which is your baseline? That's like 140,000 acres?
Uh, 33, yeah.
Yeah, we're around 30 something.
134, I think.
134. And what was your actual raw water sales?
I'd have to go to Chip. I don't have it off the top of my head. We can, we can confirm the numbers are somewhat close if the model needs to be calibrated.
Yeah, I mean, you know, because-
It sounds about right.
The thing that I handed off basically, I actually tried 2018, when there was a prediction for a big increase and it actually, you know, it dipped. In 2018, you were, I was interested to make sure that-
120 was raw, like, just raw? Okay, because this is raw and treated and, and this is also considering, you know, the average kind of climate conditions.
Does this include raw water customers?
It's talking about the, the impact on the baseline data for sensitivity analysis if only raw water customers change.
Right, so the sale of raw water would be not-
No, but it's in context, looking at total raw water deliveries, which include treated water. So, there's, if, when we start moving through this, I think you'll see, because it also goes through the same exercise with treated water.
We want to keep the scale the same between all of them, so they're comparable, so it's, you know, all-
Yeah, I mean, I read in your, in your document, it's all raw. Just when modeling inputs will be calibrated for consistency with historical delivery records. It's not the move, it's the way you, you know, if you're calibrating on a, but, so that's what it is.
So, I think the board is confused by that too. So, so the baseline is all the water sold, all the water demand and the fluctuation from the baseline that we're looking at here is just if raw water customer activity changed.
So, in this case, for instance, the treated water demand is still included in that total, but it's not changing because there's nothing changing to the treated wa-
We're not playing the game.
Exactly. That'll be on the next slide and that'll be kind of what happens if you turn the knob on treated water customers.
And you'll see there is a much-
I totally missed that.
Yeah, me too.
And we could have explained it better, it's easy to miss. And I think a lot of us are, maybe once have had because we had the benefit of stakeholder meetings. All right, Diana next, but speak louder at the podium because Michael says he can't hear us.
Hi, thank you. I was just sitting back there looking at the graph and it's presented kind of as a symmetrical kind of balanced thing. And then I started looking at the numbers and you go 25% down and 50% down, but on the other end, you go 50% up and 100%, so that's not balanced. And so, I'm asking, why did you pick those particular numbers instead of going up 25% to 50%, the same as you went down? And I think it is important to look at your actual water and keep pace with what you're calling a baseline. If it's higher than what you're selling, then you don't want that. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I had the same question, Diana.
And I was really excited about Director Hope's question. I think that's really important.
Percentages, you know, it's, this is all just a, you know, an exercise in looking at bookends for one. The percentages are calculated against different, different numbers. So, it's, you know, when we're thinking about the current area that NID is serving, if that's, you know, 30,000 acres maybe of raw water customers, you know, 50% of the- you know, 30,000 acres maybe of raw water customers, you know, 50% of the non-permanent crops, well, let's just say it's like 20,000 acres are the non-permanent crops. You know, 50% of those are 10,000 acres. When we're looking at growth, maybe it's, you know, 20,000 acres are within 1,000 feet of NID's canals that are not served. So, if we grow out to 50% of those, well, that's, you know, 10,000 acres, it's a different number, I guess, that we're calculating against when we're looking at these percentages.
Yes, you're looking at 50% of the permanent crops, which aren't all the crops. And it's the whole.
Across all of, all of the districts.
All of the district. Whereas the other numbers are within 1,000 feet of.
Yeah, acres that are not served currently, but are within a certain distance of.
Completely different.
Different numbers, exactly, yeah. So, we tried to make it balanced, so, you know, you recognize the kind of the symmetry there, you know, we tried to see kind of balanced bookends, but to get there, it's, you know, it's different percentages because it's different acreages that we're looking at.
The takeaway here is that the raw water customer, the needle, treated water customers.
Right, yeah.
1,000%.
The treated.
That's exactly right.
So, launching to the next slide, then, yes, exactly. So, treated water customers, the punchline here is that for, you know, our bookend scenarios, so on the far end, what if population declines to the minimum since 2000? And, you know, what if, what happens, kind of in the moderately low scenario, what happens if population declines to the pre-pandemic average? You know, not much of a drop, maybe about a couple thousand acre feet for each of those scenarios. On, you know, the, the growth side, if population growth continues to fill 50% of the soft service areas, so those are urban areas within the soft service, or sorry, urban zones areas within the soft service areas that are not currently, you know, served by NID, and what happens if those are developed and then served by NID? So, what happens if those fill in? Then, you know, there is a little bit of increase in demand, but again, a few thousand acre feet for, you know, filling that halfway to filling that fully. So, it's, you know, not moving the needle to the extent that, you know, the hypothetical changes in raw water customers would move the needle, you know. Within, you know, kind of looking at changes in population that are within the realm of possibility.
And we have a question to follow up on Karen's point on these baseline 4 and 5. It'd be interesting to know the actual numbers that you used here.
We can, we'll provide that. We'll provide a little bit more data, so. I think what I'm hearing is that there might be, is 1,000 feet within a canal overstated? Is there something? Once, yeah, once you look at historical new connections, how does that compare? Are we saying, well, through a 50-year period, we're going to have 1,000 times more than we had over the past 10 years? I mean, that would be a good guess, right? Okay, we can do that.
And where does Nevada City and Grass Valley?
They're raw water municipal customers, so we sell them raw water, and.
They were in the wild, raw, wild.
Yes.
Wild water.
It's a lake. That was the previous chunk to be talking.
They're not in the treated water customer.
Lincoln is in the treated water?
No, they're all raw water. So, Lincoln is only served raw water, and it is to five parcels. They're extremely large and water needy. Golf courses, Lincoln Hills, Lincoln Crossing, and a couple, two private people, I think.
Gulf of Hittu?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's five customers.
Five, I can't think of the other two, or it's just.
Just medians and stuff with.
That's Lincoln Crossing.
And the Gulf Court.
Lincoln Hills, Turkey Creek.
Yeah.
I think there's two private individuals.
One church right there on the corner, I think they give like a half an inch or something.
All right, I'm going to just wrap up with Michael's comments, or like, Trevor, did we answer you?
Yes.
Okay. Michael wants to state that you should take my last question in context of sensitivity bookends, actual demand averages rather than crop demands. Okay, consideration of that. And then Michael says, have you looked at the change in land use from rural raw water customers to urban treated water end uses? This would be a large demand reduction. Let me correct, that would be.
That's true, it would be.
No. But that's where the land use planning comes in, right? So.
From ag to urban.
If you convert ag to urban, the water use is typically much, much slower. And that's analyzed on a project, by project specific basis through a water supply assessment that's completed, but that is also why Katie's going to be also kind of tying things back out to actual land use. So, we can see, are there huge swatches of area that are currently all ag now, and it's going to be turned to all dense urban? Well, then we would have to readjust our 50-year projection, right?
Yeah, and Lincoln. That's probably the biggest one.
All right.
So, then carrying on to the next sensitivity analysis, these next two pertaining to evapotranspiration. So, this is looking at what happens if, you know, nothing else changes except temperature and its effects just on that climate-related factor that impacts evapotranspiration. And we see that it actually does, you know, you know, all else is same, does move the needle, you know, a fair bit. And that's something that, you know, is happening outside of what is happening on the ground, you know, anyone here, you know, no matter what we do, you know, if temperature is increasing by, whether it's, you know, about 2, 2 degrees Fahrenheit, or 4, or 6, you know, that will move the needle irrespective of what, you know, people are doing. You know, people will adapt, and there will be changes in what operations are, and perhaps cultivation practices and other things. So, other things will change, and this is, again, just a sensitivity analysis for the sake of looking at this impact. But it's, you know, it's definitely something that does move the needle appreciatively.
So, in Africa, when it went up 2 degrees Celsius, I mean, it, it was barren. It was typical ag, land prior. But after it went up in sub-Saharan, or the Shaheil, or wherever that is, it just wiped it out. So, I would think the use of water would even go up more than what you have stated.
It is the entire.
Increases the, it increases the irrigation season by at least one, two months. Down in the valley, they're almost irrigating one side of the year, which they never did before. So, I'm not sure we can underestimate that or overestimate it. So, I think this is underestimating it.
That's that question. It's not what, I mean, you have a model that, that would be, come up with these numbers, so how did you do that?
Yep, so there are, there are several kind of standardized equations we're using, like taking temperature and climate data and quantifying that climate-related factor. And one of those standard approaches uses that temperature as kind of the means for estimating ET in it. So, that's, that's the method that I use, is the standard equation, the hard gray, the multi- equation, which, you know, we can provide you with some resources on that if you're interested. But it's, it's basically a standardized way of relating temperature to climate-related demand, you know, climate-related factors that drive evapotranspiration. That was, that was the method for deriving that. And so, then those, you know, that information then was fed into our IDC model with all the other information about, kind of from the baseline scenario. So, current land use, current urban uses. The only thing that changed in that model was that, you know, ET or evapotranspiration factor related to climate.
Just so I'm clear, this, the number, the 125 versus what it goes up to in sensitivity Run 5, that is the additional water that is applied to the crops that is evaporotranspirated? Or is it, or is it, is that difference just ET? So, I mean, there's water applied that goes into the ground and is taken up by the plant. So, I don't know if that's clear or not, but.
Well, the vertical axis is still the same, so what we're showing there is the, you know, the amount of, like, the raw and treated water and system losses. But, yes, I would say that that, you know, that change from one scenario to another would be predominantly, you know, the change in evapotranspiration just from the temperature change.
And thus, like totally the water, because evapotranspiration is.
It's loss.
Is loss, it's not 100% of the water to.
Yes.
Maintaining light of a plant.
The Y-axis is essentially showing the baseline water uses and how it's impacted when ET changes as temperature changes.
I got that.
Right?
I got that. I'm just wanting to know, is, is the water use.
Why is the water use modified when the temperature changes and ET changes?
So, let's say scenario 4, temperature increases 4.3 degrees Fahrenheit. Is that water use of whatever, 140 something? Is that reflecting all increased water use, or is it just ET? Because you have water use going to just sustain about live plant, then you have ET.
It's how much more water you need over the baseline, the existing baseline, based off of the changes to ET associated with temperature increases.
Well, we had that example last year for about 10 to 14 days. It was so hot, we had about a 4.3 degree increase. And, I mean, it was brutal trying to keep up with the water. But what we also noticed is that the trees, even rice, kind of went dormant, just stopped. So, that might have been a self-protective thing, where they just said, okay, we're shutting down, but it, it was pretty hard. So, I, I, you got a job there to figure that one out, because we saw a sink, just everything shut down, and then resumed when the temperatures came back down, and it delayed everything at the, at the back end for harvest.
I want to make sure we're, so this, so say under your scenario 4, the increase shown, we're not, we're not saying that if it raises by 2.4 degrees Celsius, that we're going to use an additional, you know, 140,000 acre feet of water.
10, 15,000.
Yeah, it's the difference. Everything's compared. Does that help?
Yeah.
You said this, remember when it was really dry, when I first got here two years ago?
Yes.
And then we had a, so, when the drier and hotter it becomes, the less water is in the soil, the more voids there are. The more water it takes to fill up the same area, get to the root zone, to what the canals, and then you get into the issue of needing to extend that water season, because everything is drying out for so much longer before natural moisture is back into the air. Because you know how, like during the winter, you can tell, like parks, I was always big on the park watering, get to like, end of September, you still have super hot days, but you could actually start dialing back the watering, because it's not as hot for as many hours of the day. And it's cooler at night.
As we can all appreciate, it's much more complicated than just the, you know, the ETO, this is climate-related factor changing with temperature. Plants are complicated organisms, and they react to temperature as well as the soil. Many other things change with temperature, and climate changes related to temperature change.
And this also goes back to one of the reasons why we have to always update the model, right? Because everything, as we know, is changing, and we don't know a lot right now, so we have to all be committed to updating the model. And before we move on, we're almost ready, Katie, Peter has one thing to add. All plant stress is not accounted for only by increased irrigation. It is also not a linear function. Rich's example of sub-Saharan Africa is good. At some point, agriculture must change. This needs more investigation and understanding. And I think Peter's right, and, you know, when times get tough, that's how innovation gets driven, because people can be very innovative and creative to solve problems as water becomes more scarce. Marco.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point and leave with a little bit of our location and in the big picture. Katie has done is just look at the thing, based on what happened at a local level. If one's run the HMS model, we run all the other climate scenario, then we're going to get how the whole picture works together. For example, we're going to be looking at how the soil moisture is being impacted due to changes in precipitation and damage to the soil moisture deficit in the ground. It's bad also drives a lot of this stuff. And Katie will have those inputs from the climate change models to go into her model. So, you can't really compare to what's happening in Africa or some other locations that went dry, because we're only looking at part of the picture here. But we get that whole picture together, then you will be able to see that impact, that comparison, that's all.
Yeah, I think one of the things to remember, where we have an inherent weakness in our system, is we have small reservoirs that rely on snowpack. It's like our garage ice chest, right? Does everybody have that? Like the garage freezer, I have a big one, right? I could store extra stuff in there, but if the garage freezer is melting, and you're stuck with only your small freezer, you have a lot less storage. All right, everyone, reminder, Michael cannot hear people at the podium, so speak louder. Katie?
Okay. So, our second sensitivity analysis with respect to ET, I think, hopefully starts to kind of capture these many different complicated factors that relate to ET, not just, you know, temperature and climate effects on that climate-related factor, but also, you know, differences in, what's going to, climate-related effects on crops and vegetation, but also cultivation practices, irrigation methods. So, this sensitivity analysis looked at the total ET that we saw from open ET, so thinking back a few slides to those, the graph with the kind of the black band and the gray band around it. In this sensitivity analysis, we took the bottom of that gray band and the top of that gray band as our most extreme scenario, so looking at 10th percentile of all the parcels, you know, that we've observed in NID, and 90th percentile. And then, you know, within that, also looked at, you know, the 75th percentile, the 25th percentile, and then there at that baseline is the median. So, we see, you know, when you sort of take together all of the different differences that we see across NID, it's quite, quite a big change in, you know, ET. Now, is it realistic that everyone in NID is going to fall into the 10th percentile or the 90th percentile? No. But, you know, this gives us an understanding perhaps of, you know, if conditions, you know, were like the 90th percentile and the 10th percentile across all of NID, it would have quite a big, you know, impact to ET. So, just, you know, this is mostly to point to that the strong impact that ET and ET changes and differences can have on demand. So, to the extent that practices are changing, that climate is changing, it will, you know, move the needle quite a lot. And some of that are, you know, are things that perhaps, you know, can, can change over time, with more, I don't know, different changes in irrigation practices, or, or certain resources, or, you know, whatever the case may be. But some of those things are going to be things like, like temperature and climate that we, we can't control, you know, we just react to. And so, you know, it has the potential to move the needle a fair amount. Now, how much, I don't know exactly. I don't, you know, have that crystal ball, I wish I did. But, you know, it does have the potential to have a significant impact. I think that kind of ties together what we've talked about. I'll move on to the last one, then. So, in this case, this is just a look at the system losses, all else is same, nothing changing on the landscape, except the loss has encouraged to get water there. You know, we have our 15% system loss, but what if, you know, what if it's actually 10%? Or what if it's actually 20%? Or what if, you know, something happens and it becomes 40% in a year? That also can move the needle quite a bit. So, you know, just to note that, you know, that is a potential area where, you know, water could be going and, you know, isn't necessarily being used within the district. So, maybe that's an opportunity to conserve some water if, you know, there's a need to respond to, you know, other losses related to climate change or whatnot.
But this is a good one to identify, but understand that we're talking about system wise, right? In terms of losses. So, you see that going from 15% to 10% district-wise, gives you that, a relatively smaller savings than going the other way. That could potentially be a lot of infrastructure improvement in order to lower that, that overall loss, encasement of canals, line of canals, that type of stuff.
Would also be ridiculous to go the other way, right? So, it should be.
If I ever said it.
No, absolutely.
But we should never be above the baseline.
Right, we shouldn't.
We should strive to go below, but to Doug's point, you know, there has to be a cost-benefit. You're not going to gold plate your canals for 1% savings.
For all the analysis that we talked about today, it's fair to say that you were bound by the, the raw water season dates not changing, really shrinking.
Yes, that's correct.
So, the ET sensitivity analysis does not contemplate extending a season due to temperature changes on the shoulder months. So, that could be something, you know, we could take.
That would be an input that we could put in here.
Yeah, well, we'll talk to the team offline, but that is a question that we often get, is that if it continues, it's the shoulder months where people really struggle with water when you're getting the longer hotter summers, and so the watering season's getting extended. And we've, we have been seeing the challenge with it. getting extended. And we've, we have been seeing the challenge with it. Um, how could we model, which I think that we could come up with some realistic ways to do it, if we, you know, started the season, it's probably actually extending the season is more like it.
Right.
You know, if you extend it by two weeks.
Everyone wants something different, but most, most.
They do.
People want it extended right now.
It depends on the year.
It's taking.
Couple years ago, we had, we had no rain in, like, February, March, April. I mean, we had a completely dry spring. And, and everybody was desperate. I, I remember Chip's graphs, when, when the water started flowing, the, I mean, the usage skyrocketed, because everybody's landscape was all dried out. So I, I, I think we, I mean, it'd be nice to be able to have flexibility to say to our customers, in this type of year, we're gonna start early, we might, I don't, and we play it out.
We can run some, so I have some ideas for some scenarios that we can run to come up with what additional supply that would need to accommodate some type of extensions based off of water from your type.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a simple of demand, right?
Right.
You can increase our overall demand, and you saw in the sensitivity analysis, that's the hugest swing is the raw water demand, which is what we're talking about. So adding two weeks.
That's why I bring it up, is I'm concerned that.
Substantial amount.
I think over time, especially if we're looking out fifty years, the, the shoulder months are gonna become really important.
Right.
And that's gonna be a huge percentage compared to some of these things.
Yes, I think it's good. Well, let's talk about it, figure out how to get it included.
So we're down to these slides. Um, this last one here closes out the sensitivity analysis. So a lot of information here, but this is all information that we've shown on the previous slides, just combined into one figure. So we have there on the Y-axis, those are the different sensitivity analyses of these past five slides, each of those figures, the information is just combined here, ranked from generally greatest effect to lowest effect as best we could. Um, and then on the, the X-axis, that is the, you know, what was previously on the Y-axis of all the other figures. So that's the average water requirement, and we show that is kind of, you know, it's, you know, further to the right or the left, depending on if it's, um, an increase in water use or, you know, an increase in the water requirement or a decrease, um, around that baseline, the baseline being that dotted line down the center. So, I mean, really what we see here is, um, I think what we've been talking about this whole time is that, um, raw water demand, um, potential for ET changes or, you know, differences in ET over time. Um, that's where I think the biggest potential increase in demand or decrease in demand, depending, but probably, you know, perhaps increase in demand, um, could be. Um, now, where the truth lies in those bookends, I do not know. Um, but we have, you know, these as some, you know, some illustrations to kind of start to, to ask those questions and determine what we think are the realistic bookends for moving forward with the productive scenarios. Um, and then, uh, just to note, you know, as, as we talked about with the treated water customers, that, you know, really doesn't move the needle to the same extent, but it should factor into those, um, bookends, and also should factor into those bookends to the extent if urban development occurs where former ag lands were. That is something that should factor into those. So, um, this is, you know, just the summary there.
Sure.
Happy to.
Ask. And Katie modified this slide for Director Calder. It's Trevor's style. Doing good. Katie, thank you, excellent job.
Thank you.
Any questions from anybody?
Wait, where's the next step?
Slide.
Yeah, one more slide.
Oh.
The final slide here. Bringing it all together, um, it's a quick, it's a quick slide. Um, so now, you know, we have the information that we've gathered, um, from these, uh, different data sources, but also, um, sensitivity analyses. We now have an understanding of kind of, maybe where some bookends could lie. Um, but, you know, that's kind of the next step in this process, is setting, um, setting those bookends and evaluating future demand scenarios. So those are the next steps, um, also connecting this demand model to the other components of the plant for water process, the RESIM model, um, for the reservoirs, and the, um, uh, HECC HMS model for the, the watersheds, and also the climate change analysis. So tying that all together, um, and the presentation, um, on those future scenarios will be in July and August.
I look forward to those. I'm anxious.
Another question, um, how does environmental flows work in here?
So those.
Cause they're not in the model yet.
I thought they were in the regulator, from the regulatory.
They're totally.
But they're not in the.
They're added in at the RESIM model, like, so the RESIM model incorporates.
It's included as part of the reservoir operations. The regulatory flows are reservoir operation releases.
It'll be additional demand on.
Yeah.
It gets added to this.
Right, it's not in the bookends.
It's not in the demand bookends.
Right.
It'll be in the reservoir operation bookends.
Demand.
Oh, yeah. It'll be in the overall demand number, but it's not in this IDC modeling component, because those are more, these are what we have to do based on.
Think of this as reservoir down, reservoir release down system.
Right.
Reservoir operations model is real, Megan from HGR.
Yes.
That's what, that was what she was presenting. That looks at those regulatory flows, reservoir evaporation. Did you have something to add, Otis?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually made copies of the, uh, the comments I made here, that twenty-one, urban water management plan and ag water management plan, because at that time, when I submitted this, twenty pages, uh, he said, these, these questions will be answered in the plan for water. And they were not answered at the time, because this process was going to answer these questions. And so if he, if he cared to look at these again, you know, many of these questions are still unanswered, like, how much are the customers actually devoting? That's one big measure. How much are the customers overbuying? How many acres of water crops are actually being irrigated? Of that data, I don't think it's being caught into the process. Is water running off the customers' property? Is the customer overwatering? The conservation potential of crops, the efficiency of the system we're using, contrary to cost, what is, how much turf is being irrigated? You know, there's a lot of questions in here that I hope can be answered in the next two meetings. If, you know, if, if you look at the ag water management plan on page forty-five or nine, that's the second document, highlighted yellow, this was a LIDAR overflight study that was done in twenty-fourteen that referenced two thousand and five data. It was not only LIDAR overflights, but it was, uh, it was field testing, it was round truth. So you have very good parcel-like original data on the difference on exactly what is agricultural pasture in Nevada County up to the jurisdictional boundary of the, of the bed irrigation district. You have that data, you have very good data, and congratulations on what you guys are doing right now, by the way, the exact data. I'm just worried that, that you will drill deep enough to actually understand. If you did that, how much pasture in two thousand and five, two fourteen, twenty twenty-three, what's the trend? What's happening? Is the increase in water use in raw water, is that happening in the agricultural sector, or is that happening in urban landscaping and water features? Those kinds of questions are policy questions, which you are gonna have to answer, and you will be, I know a lot of, lots of people begin to, uh, this social engineering work. What you are doing today by not drilling in that, well, is social engineering of one kind. And the plot is that growth in those raw water, urban, turf, water, uh, feature kinds of growth is what I suspect is, because these studies are showing that actual agricultural pasture is finding, and this is showed by twenty-five percent between. If that's actually what's happening, and you are raising rates of your urban customers to subsidize your raw water deliveries, you are asking your urban customers to subsidize the wealthiest class in America. These are the questions and the implications that if you drill down, you will get the answers to. And I'm afraid that what I'm seeing in just the next two meetings, that these kinds of questions are actually not the answer.
So Otis, I'm gonna invite you, so we had a side meeting, you recall when you and Diana came and met with Karen and myself and Greg, and we talked about the fact we're not gonna spend a whole lot of time right now due to other time commitments, going back and answering questions that were previously asked about the agricultural water management plan and the urban water management plan, because we are not relying on those, that data for this process. So why don't you do us a favor, go through your questions, and see if any apply now to the plan for water. But we're also, we did it, designed this process to get into a social engineering conversation, we are just simply doing a planning process to look for, because as we've noted several times now, we are not differentiating water demand between lawn and.
Golf courses.
Golf courses. I, I mean, if you want, if you wanna go to that extent, you know, it would be difficult to, um, you know, it would be difficult to comply with our current water rights, it's not how the current system's set up. But those are really good conversations at the statewide level.
Yeah, I would, I would respectfully disagree, and, uh, I would respectfully say that I'm asking you to dig into data that is not the data that you generated earlier in your plans. It's an outside study where you can take this current data, even learn something. Really asking you to burrow in and learn what the implications of these things are, because you can make choices. Rights and, and water district. You can measure water, do conservation programs. These are all being done all across the state, and I really hope that you're also able to do those things.
All right, so I'm gonna move on to Michael. One last question, he says, thank you for the nice presentations from David's engineering.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
That was very good. All right, we're all done.
Okay.